Good evening and welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and twenty four Cities Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So welcome and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
And Councilmember Christensen is absent tonight. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I am here and Councilor Christensen has requested to be excused from tonight's roundtable meeting and also council meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Councilor Christensen?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved by Councilwoman Cotton and second by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any pos nay? And Councilor. Councilwoman Christensen is excused. We now move on to the first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda and this is just for the roundtable only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Johnson, segment Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any pos nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So this evening's special business is review and deliberation of the mayor's reports, two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six biennial budget. And it's reminded, this was released on September third, followed by deliberate deliberations that evening. And again, during a special workshop on September fourth. And tonight we will continue deliberations and welcome our finance director Drew Bootay and budget manager Janet Walker to provide information and answer any of the council's questions. So I'll turn it over to our finance director Drew.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, we're, this is basically a continuation from September the fourth and the Q and A session that we have then. We've received more questions since then and we've attempted to answer some of those for the most part. So with that said, we're gonna pull Janet up to kick that off. Soon as I share my screen.
In the black.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for joining in, joining us again. I'm just gonna jump right into questions. Question number one. Is assuming a vacancy rate a normal practice for cities? And this was actually a two parter. I believe the first part of this question said, have we had a vacancy rate in the past? The answer to that is no, we have not. But is this a normal practice for cities? We turn to the government Finance Officer Association, the GFOA, which is, they give a lot of guidance on how things should be done within the government process for cities and states. And so we turn to them a lot for guidance and their response to this question is not all positions will be filled fifty-two weeks per year. So expected vacancies need to be addressed in the salary budget. In doing so, however, government should consider developing policies on how to treat these vacancies. If the government fully funds salaries associated with vacancies, it is building some potential cushion into the budget. So I would consider our talks right now as we're addressing that. How do we want to address our vacant? Do we want that cushion to exist? Do we want to take it out and make better use of it? So that is the GFOA's position on it and then we can determine how best we should implement a vacancy policy. The next question.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, a question based on that one, which is, so my understanding of how the general process works is that the council adopts a budget and that in the budget, there are appropriations. And what those are is that we are telling the administration what they can actually spend on what. So for this, is this meaning that we are saying that that so many positions exist, but that the administration has only appropriated the funds for ninety-five percent of them? So if the administration says, you know, we want to go above the ninety-five, I say seventy-five. Anyway, now if we want to go above the ninety-five percent, the administration have to come back to council and get a budget amendment to give them that authorization. Is that correct?
That is correct, although we are. Oh.
Wait just a second. Did you want to respond to that?
Yeah.
Okay, no, do you want her to respond to it? Our budget manager?
Okay, but the start out was, okay, go ahead.
There is some latitude to address that because we budget based on a fund level or department level. So if we're spending less in one area, we might be able to spend, go a little bit over that ninety-five percent. But if we went beyond our, our total appropriation, yes, we would have to come back to council.
Yep.
Okay, Councilor Vincent?
And it also seems to me that if, if we approve this budget with this understanding, then that is an approval of this strategy, right? Is that the way you read it, Joe?
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah. Yes, but that they can't go above the ninety-five percent as an average staffing level. Which again, it could end up actually being more like the ninety-six percent, depending on which positions are actually filled. But in terms of just the, the budgetary numbers, it works out to being approximately ninety-five percent staffing. And that the administration would not have the approval from us to go above that much spending.
That's. So Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and then Councilor Vincent.
So to be clear, what you're approving is the department appropriation. Okay, and you may also consider that you're approving the number of physicians you're charging. You're not telling them they can only staff to ninety-five percent of their staffing plan. You're telling them they have to stay within their department appropriation. If their staffing happens to be, I hope, like a hundred percent would be great, then they're gonna have to look for efficiencies in other areas to cover that. It's only when their expected spend for the department goes over the appropriation that they need to come back to us for a change in that appropriation. So you may consider you're approving the staffing and you're approving the appropriation, but you're not telling them only to staff to ninety-five percent.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, the, the way, the way I was understanding it is we understand that we are likely not going to, to have a hundred percent staffing. We're likely going to be closer to ninety-five percent and then we're using that additional five percent to address needs. Because as was explained, if we, or in the response from the state, if we're, if we're setting aside that money in anticipation of one hundred percent staffing, then we are foregoing the potential already realized needs that we have right now that we can share among departments by, by reallocating those funds. And what I, what I was understanding, and it's very possible that I was misunderstanding it, but what I, what I was understanding it was that using this strategy in this budget, if we approve this budget, then we are approving that strategy. That was the way I was understanding it.
Councilwoman Walton, do you have your hand up?
Yeah. I, I think the other thing to take in consideration of all this is we have a hundred plus employees across the government from all agencies. At any one time, you're going to have vacancies for a number of reasons. Attrition, retirement, people have resigned and, and positions remain open. And the numbers that they've provided to us is in excess of ten percent vacancy. I believe it was fourteen percent. And if we go back and we want to spend a lot of time, we could find that, you know, five percent vacancy is a very conservative approach. And I raised this last time, we always budget for a hundred percent, but we're rarely there. And for us to be at ninety-five percent is, is going to be even a stretch to, to, to us. That's probably going to be more full employment at the city. It probably, you know, in the high would be more somewhere in the ninety-one, ninety-two percent. So this certainly gives us the flexibility to staff accordingly.
Councilor Washington?
Yeah, just to that point, it's my understanding and maybe I heard this completely wrong. Unfortunately, I was, I missed the fourth, the meeting on the fourth, but typically we look at a ten percent number. Is that? Is that accurate to?
What is the question?
Ten percent vacancy? In the past, okay.
We haven't.
Maybe I heard that completely wrong.
We ever, ever had a.
We never had a vacancy.
No, budgeted.
Budgeted, okay.
Right. We've always hundred percent full.
Okay. I had that wrong.
That's where you get the cushion that then does allow you to use that funding elsewhere.
Okay.
You may have been thinking though of our actual vacancy rate, which is a little bit over ten percent.
Very, very possible. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. I'm going to move on to our next question. The city budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand annually during two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four for the Tourism Promotion Fund, Fund Number one hundred and ten. Is this the typical amount? These are restricted revenues that relate to the lodging tax and historically, I think the average has been a little bit over eighty thousand dollars annually. And I wasn't part of the discussions last time, but I believe that the decision was made just to spend all remaining fund balance so that there's nothing just hanging in there from year to year to take full advantage of what, what's available in the fund and what we've received. Currently, and we are receiving much less than we have historically due to the placement of the Salish Lodge into tribal trust. So those amounts have decreased substantially in this biennium and you've probably seen that as you've reviewed the budget document. Next question. Why does the fund balance change within the opioid settlement fund, number one hundred and twenty-three? The reason for this is that the two comparative numbers that you're seeing within the budget are both estimates. The first is the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which was made in two thousand and twenty-two. So that was our estimate of where our ending fund balances will be. And now two years later, we're making another estimate at where we think the ending fund balance will be for two thousand and twenty-four. So we have updated data. So those, those amounts will not tie to each other, ending fund balance in the beginning because they're both based on budget, not actual. So in other words, we believe we're going to have more money to start the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six biennium than we thought we were going to have when the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget was originally established. Next question. The Home Elevations Fund, number one hundred and forty-four, has one point five million left in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget, but two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six shows an opening balance of zero. Where did those monies go? This is the same, essentially the same thing that happened with the opioid fund. We had the potential to get that much in grants, one point five million in grants. However, the opportunity didn't arise. I believe that these are based on homeowners applying for these funds and then we would give them one hundred percent of those funds to the homeowners. And that did not occur. So we didn't receive that revenue and we didn't have any related expenditure. So the fund balance for that will essentially be zero at the beginning of the next biennium.
But I think we are going to have a couple homes that, home elevations. And so at that point, then you will show the funds in the budget as part of that.
We are budgeting at two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six for, I believe, five hundred thousand dollars
Right.
in elevations and then alike, a similar expenditure. And if that happens in two thousand and twenty-four in some way, shape or form, then we would come back to you for an appropriation for an amendment. And we would actually spend, receive and spend some of that money. Next question. Several funds, including the Non-Utilities Capital Fund, number three hundred and ten, the Wastewater Operations Fund, number four hundred and two, and the Stormwater Operations Fund, number four hundred and three, have an increase in wages of much larger than can be explained by the FTE increase or change. Why is this increase in approximation? And of course, all of our budgeting numbers are approximations, but our salary and benefit forecasting is much more precise than some of our other budgeting because we have a lot of known data points. We know what employees are making currently. We have actual numbers on what some of the benefits will be next year. So it's approximations, but with a high degree of accuracy. So I've created this table just to be able to follow some of the reasons why these salary amounts are increasing. The first column, Non-Utility Capital, you can see that the increase is approximately a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The increase due to new positions is a hundred and twelve thousand and the increase due to overtime is six thousand. And then you can see that the remaining biennial increase of forty thousand is approximately an eight percent increase, which is about in line with what we would expect based on the new CBA. For the Water Utility, we have a larger increase of three hundred and thirty-two thousand biennium over biennium. We have some increases due to the full-time equivalent position redistribution. So that means no change in actual employees, but we have recalibrated where we are booking their time based on what they're actually doing, where they're spending their time. That's approximately seventy thousand. An increase due to new positions in the Water Utility Fund is a hundred and six thousand. And then increase due to overtime is, is actually a decrease of eight thousand and a decrease in standby of forty thousand. Leaving our remaining biennial increase of two hundred and five thousand, which is about thirteen percent increase. You'll see that's not exactly the same as the non-utility capital. There's variation based on when people are hired, based on what their salaries were in relationship to those new tables that we've adopted, based on the wage study that we did in two thousand and twenty-two. So a little bit of variation there, but around where we would expect them. For wastewater, we have similar, I'm just gonna jump down to the bottom, that percent increase after all those adjustments is eleven percent. And then for stormwater utility, we have a much bigger increase of twenty percent is that bottom number. And I dove into each, each employee because I was surprised by that amount. And I think what it really equates to is just that that department really didn't stack up to where we would expect them to be based on that wage study. And so they experienced the largest increases. Probably we experienced more cost savings than we should have in those years. And now they're up to where we should be. And just due to the variability of positions, their increase was much higher than some of the others.
Councilwoman Walton?
So I'm kind of curious behind the stormwater utility and the increase due to overtime and standby. There, there's gotta be some reasoning behind it.
City Administrator Chambliss?
I'll take this one for you, Jeff. They're also the tree folks, so they respond whenever branches go down or trees go down, which happens quite often.
We schedule that during hours?
We try. We really do and we, we, we have a good talk with the tree if it falls down outside of those.
And with that, I am going to turn the time back over to Drew.
All right, so the next question is, what is the city getting a ten point seven percent solid waste administrative fee? We're happy to anytime council wants. We will conduct the analysis council would like to see. But in the meantime, we can hopefully share some of the financial impact from that solid waste admin fee that was recently approved as a part of the solid waste contract overall. So just to kind of run through this table, which may be a bit difficult if you don't have it on screen right there. We've got your common service levels in the left-hand column. In essence, describing a residential thirty-two gallon garbage cart, which includes the monthly costs, including the ten point seven percent fee, the monthly costs excluding the ten point seven percent fee and what that ten point seven percent fee would translate into. We also do that for the multifamily commercial two cubic yard garbage dumpster, as well as the multifamily commercial twenty cubic yard dumpster, garbage dumpster as well. Going left to right with those common service levels, you'll see the current contract amount and what that ten point seven percent fee translates into, what that fee translates into under the new contracts and what the percentage changes. So between the current contract and the new contract, the ten point seven percent fee increased from three dollars and twenty-two cents monthly to four dollars and sixty cents monthly, or roughly a forty-three percent change. That monthly increase is equal to one dollar and thirty cents or roughly sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents annually for a thirty-two gallon garbage cart. Now, just trying to do, go a little bit further than that itself, a ten percent increase in the solid waste admin fee would have equaled thirty-two cents. The difference between the four dollars and sixty cents under the new contract and three dollars and fifty-four cents with only a ten percent increase in the fee would be one dollar and six cents. The fee to only a ten percent increase instead of the forty-three percent increase would cost a residence with a thirty-two gallon garbage cart, twelve dollars and seventy-two cents less annually. And so with a ten percent increase in the fee, the percentage increase in the new contract, instead of forty-three percent for a thirty-two gallon garbage cart would have been thirty-nine point five percent. So that's just basically some math to help your understanding of the solid waste admin fee. There. And so with that said, I'm gonna pull up Chief Bailey back there for the next question.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Just, never mind.
Quick question on the, the admin fee. So I know it's basically a revenue stream source. And how much of administration are we doing this? I mean, we're not sending out the utility bills and we're not for waste management and such. So as far as the administration goes, what, what part are we using that for?
So in terms of the service provided to manage the contract, I can't quite answer that. I think Jeff back there might be able to, but I would surmise that not only has this fee been used to support that management aspect of the contract, but also it's been used to fund really street maintenance across the city.
Okay.
Overall, so you know, when you've got those big burly trucks running around town, they certainly do have an impact on your asphalt.
Yeah.
Right over time. And so in essence, we've been deploying that money as well to support our street maintenance activities.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So I was here when that contract was done, originally, okay? There is no basis of estimate for what that eight percent is. As Councilwoman said, it was kind of pulled out of air at that time. At that time, it was also said that if these rates start to go up, we can reduce that administrative fee to make up the difference or to lessen the load. Okay? Sorry, I missed. So. And I, I do take some umbrage with this math in that taxed by a thousand little tax cuts is still a tax. Okay, we need to look at the big picture of how much we're actually costing the community to collect this administrative fee. Now I'm gonna take the administrative fee, as it is called, as an administrative fee, not a tax. Okay? Our costs, as you just saw, labor have gone up by at most twenty percent in particular categories, not forty percent, which this cost of this contract is going up by forty percent to the cost of service. And this fee will jump forty percent if it remains at the exact rate it is right now. I think it inappropriate as a administrative fee to do that. Okay? Quick math on my side, it's ought to be, you know, somewhere between four and six versus eight. We're gonna have a discussion of what is the appropriate escalator on the administrative fee.
Councilor Vincent?
It seems to be an increase at that rate wouldn't even keep up with inflation though, would it? Four percent, six percent?
It would, because it's.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Right. It would because it is off the base service cost of solid waste. Okay, so what, and that solid waste has a cost inflator based on, I believe, inflator the COI, I can't remember. It has a cost inflator for cost of services. It also has a cost inflator for a cost of tipping fees, which typically go a little faster than inflation. We can have a whole discussion on that, but it goes faster inflation. So the base cost will go up to keep up with inflation. Waste management will make sure that they're not losing ground. And as it's a straight percentage off that, the funds that are collected will keep up with inflation at whatever rate we set. If you were paying a hundred dollars last year, you're gonna pay a hundred and forty dollars when this goes in place. Your, your administrative fee will increase by forty percent also, not by eight percent, by forty percent. Because it's just a percentage off the base. The base of the overall contract. Base of the overall contract.
I think there's other things besides roads that it helps cover. I mean, it's not necessarily us sitting there and doing administration in order to, for ten point seven percent of the fee. Maybe he can fill it in. Or City Administrator Champus?
One of the biggest costs that I've identified out of, from my coming over there is actually street sweeping. Our street sweepers delayed. I believe we paid a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for street sweeping last year. That was an expense that none of us were anticipating because we all expected to get the street sweeper last year. And street sweeping is a direct response of, of garbage trucks weekly. Ideally, the street sweeper goes through the neighborhood the day after garbage collection to prevent anything that the garbage truck drops from getting into the storm drain system because it's a lot more expensive to get it out once it's in there.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
But if we did have garbage service, we wouldn't street sweep? You wouldn't have to do it as often.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I think this is a perfectly worthy discussion. I, I wonder if this is the kind of, just as an example, this is the kind of thing, why we should go to our committees to have further discussions about the budget and that this is the kind of thing that I'd expect Parks and Public Works to have a good discussion about and come back to council with a, with a nice recommendation.
It's a good idea.
Council, you concur with that. We can move to President Public Works.
Okay, next question. Chief Bailey, everyone?
Along those same lines, just as you talked about, although this is something that we're asking for in the fire department budget because the, the wildland, the hundred thousand for a wildland vehicle, maybe a wildland program is something that affects the whole council as it is a new service. You know, they, they thought it'd be good to just put out some of the information so that the whole council could hear it in regards to what the benefit and possible reimbursement that a vehicle like that could bring. So we want to bring that forward to you tonight. So really what we did is we put a hundred thou, or what I did is put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to equip, purchase and equip a used wildland vehicle. Basically, we're looking at, if you could picture a pickup front with a pump on the back. So it'd be the size of a pickup. A hundred was based, a hundred thousand was basically a placeholder to purchase the vehicle, equip it, maintain it and provide training if needed. And what it did is what the thought process was this is it allows us the opportunity, as this is a two-year budget, this allows us the opportunity to keep our eyes out for something that would fit the needs of the city. That's in good shape and we wanted to have money possibly set aside if that's the direction the council wanted to go as opposed to having to come back and ask, hey, we found something we need to move on it quick. Thought this would be the better way to approach it so that we could at least be ready in case something came up that met our needs over the winter for next, next summer or even next, you know, even into two thousand and twenty-six if we so choose. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight. The first part of the question was had to do with reimbursement or what it possibly could bring back to the city in regards to funds. I'll talk a little bit later about some of the benefits, but first of all, to answer that first question, based on the wildland deployment reimbursement models, having a vehicle that goes out on these deployments is worth one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars per day that it goes out just for the vehicle. Basically, that's renting the vehicle. Doesn't pay for the personnel, the personnel is paid for separately, totally covered also. But you also, not only you get paid for your personnel on the vehicle, you get paid for the vehicle itself. But that cost is supposed to include fuel, wear and tear, maintenance. Think of it similar as how do the IRS works? You know, you pay for my, you get miles for the IRS, but your, your costs have to come out of that. The way that it would probably be set up is that, you know, there'd be a minimum of one person from Snoqualmie on it to be able to drive it just because of insurance purposes, familiarity with the rig. But then you, if we don't have the staffing ourselves, we could pick up other people that are trained from other departments. That's how a lot of the departments in King County operate. For example, Fall City will send one of their rigs out with two members, maybe from Kirkland or Bellevue, because there's a lot of departments that have wildcard trained members, but not a vehicle to go on. And u- using Fall City as an example, talking with their deputy chief. And this is just, you know, what they did last year, they sent out a rig five times, whether it was a tender, sometimes it was a tender, sometimes it was an engine, but it's about the same. They sent it out five times and after their cost brought in about thirty thousand dollars for the vehicle on those times that it was sent out. So that, that's an example of how it possibly could bring money back into the city. Of course, it's dependent on whether we have the staffing for it to be sent out, whether there's actual fires that it's deployed on. So there's, it's not guaranteed, it's not something you could put in the budget. You know, it could be something that we look at down the road. If we do purchase something that maybe that money is, is set aside into a separate account to help pay for any repairs that might need to happen to the units or equipment or even to save money for something else in the future. You know, that would be some of the suggestions we would bring back if we go down that path. And we're looking at actually purchasing a vehicle, what that program would look like. So to move into some of the benefits that we could realize for having one of these vehicles besides what I just talked about. One is that it would mainly be used for brush responses in Snoqualmie. You know, we'd have it at the station, it'd be ready to go. If a brush call came in on the response card, it could be added to the response so that we'd be going out with the equipment. Although our engines right now carry a minimal amount of fire, uh, wildland equipment, we'd be able to have more equipment, more hose on it. And then as the mayor mentioned, last time we talked about this, it, uh, it would have the ability to be a little bit more nimble than our current engines. We'd be able to take it off-road, be able to take it, you know, on some of the, the back roads, some of the dirt roads that we have around the area. So it'd be a little bit more maneuverable than our current fire truck. And then also it'd be, it'd be cheaper obviously to operate than one of our fire engines as opposed to, we could put a, you know, a fifty, a sixty thousand dollar pickup on the road as opposed to our million dollar fire engine when we're talking about brush fires, getting it off the road. Uh, it, it could get costly when we're talking about the, the bigger, more expensive fire engine. So it'd be, give us an ability to specialize and take what's just needed. Another advantage would be is that it's a four-wheel drive, usually it'd be a four-wheel drive vehicle. So that's just another vehicle that we'd have in the city available to us in inclement weather. Uh, currently our eight cars are four-wheel drive, but this would give us another unit that does have some capabilities for fire or just being able to get around the city in case we have inclement weather. So it could be used for that. Uh, it would be on the run card, so it'd be used as a regional asset. Currently, the different, for, if we asked, if we had a brush fire here in Snoqualmie, we'd be getting. The first one would be three brush rigs from outside the area coming into the city. This would allow us to be able to offer that back in case we need to help our partners or our agencies around us. So it would be part of the, the regional response for mutual aid in King County. A- as I mentioned above, it'd be allow us to go potentially on state moves if we're available, state mobilizations across, across the state. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that we be taking it out of the state, but more than likely be kept in the state. And then really more importantly, I think, is it just allows us to dip our toes into the wildland arena just to see how it would work for us. And, and I'm not suggesting that a hundred thousand dollars is a, a drop in the bucket, but when you're looking at the bigger scheme of things in regards to buying a brand new vehicle or something like that. Buying a used vehicle is a real low cost entry into it to where, you know, maybe after two years or three years, we decide this isn't the city way. This isn't the, the direction for the city. Maybe we purchase a different vehicle or maybe we sell it back, you know, it's, it's a minimal investment as opposed to when I'm talking about. You know, four, five, six hundred thousand dollars for a brand new vehicle. So it allows us to kind of proof of concept, if you will, if it works as some of it, as it has for some of the other departments where you can build a little bit of money back. The other thing it can do for us is just training and experience. We haven't been able to deploy, we have, uh, let's see, of the twelve current members of the department. We have ten of them that are wildland trained and, but we don't see a lot of it. We don't see very much in the city. So by having a vehicle that would be able to go on some of these responses or, like I said, being able to mobilize for Eastern Washington. This would give some of our personnel a lot more training, experience to be able to bring back to the city to not only train our members, but also be ready if there is something that ever does happen in the city, it just gives them more, you know, more experience, more, uh, exposure to those type of events. And then the last one is just, if you remember, some of the public safety committee might remember, some of the recommendations from our most recent accreditation. One of the recommendations called for us to develop in the next, you know, five years, our next recertification period was to develop a formal wildland urban interface program. By purchasing a vehicle, putting this money aside, that's moving us toward that goal. We would obviously have to have some kind of vehicle if we were going to have a program. So because it is part of our recommendations for accreditation, being able to purchase the vehicle and move in that direction will help us realize some of those goals that were recognized by the peer team that came out, looked at the city and, and some of the recommendations they gave for the, the future is things we want to look at. So tho- those are some of the reasons I, I came up with how we could utilize a vehicle. Again, we can talk about it more in the public safety committee if there's any questions, or if there's any questions tonight, I can answer them tonight. We just thought that the finance and, and the department thought it'd be a good idea just to get some of that out there so everyone could hear what we were kind of thinking about because it is a new, I guess you would say, a program or a new service that we would be providing as part of this, uh, these funds.
So I guess one point, wasn't it, isn't it also maneuverable within the city, like in the alleyways and some of the tight city streets that you can't take the fire engine down?
Yeah.
As well.
I mentioned that in regards to taking it off-road, but that is true. There are some areas in the city, although it wouldn't have a pump that you would necessarily be able to put somebody behind. Uh, if we're sending somebody into a house, obviously, because it's not, uh, we're talking about a pickup truck style. There's some other ones out there that we might talk down the road on, but this one, it would allow us to get into some of those back areas on the back sides of the ridge where the woods are, some of the back alleys. We would be able to get it a lot closer to some of the, uh, some of that wildland interface, some of those woods in between here and Fall City, here between. You know, Echo Glen, those kind of things, it would be a little bit more nimble in those regards. Uh, some of the sewage, uh, not sewage, the storm retention ponds. Sorry, sorry, Jeff.
Sometimes double sewage.
We have those too, but that's, there's no wildland there. It would do, it would allow us to get back into some of those, uh, storm retention ponds, uh, easier, like I said, than we would be able to take our, our big fire engine in it.
Are those catching fire?
It, they have brass, they have woods around them, so they have the potential. Uh, we have it, we did have one actually. I think it was two years ago, two or three years ago, we had one on the, on the backside up on the ridge. There was one on the backside, kind of where the police department is. We did have one back there that we had to stretch. You know, six, seven, eight hundred feet from the front of it because we didn't have a rig available, so we had a branch off of that. And then we had one, uh, in the area kind of between the hospital and, um, the buildings up there off of Jacobia. We had one kind of back in that area, believe that was two summers ago, maybe two springs ago. Again, where we, we did have some brush trucks from some of our neighbors that came out. But we weren't able, we had to wait for them to show up. We weren't able to get back into ourselves. We were on the trails on foot, spotting where it was, and then we had to wait till the, the brush rigs came from some of the other departments to where we were able to. You know, when you're talking about stretching five, six, seven hundred feet of hose through the woods, you want that small wildland hose. You don't want to be carrying that, uh, two and a half, uh, you know, two and a half inch hose that we would for a structure fire. So it's a little easier to, to take the wildland hose back there.
Caster Johnson.
I got a, a couple of things here. First one, uh, can this truck respond to those locations without having to wait for a backup truck from somewhere else?
Yeah, the way we would set up a, the response card is that it would be available at the station. So if a call came in for a brush fire, it would add automatically ask for that rig. Just like we do right now, we're cross-staffed with the engine and the A car. It would show, the way we work with dispatch, it would show our rig is available for response. So if a brush fire came in for that certain type, then it would be dispatched instead of the engine. Right now, you would send our engine on a brush fire in the city. We would set it up so this engine would be sent either to a brush fire in the city or, you know, just outside the city. So it would take the place of, uh, it would automatically be sent to those type of calls.
That follow-up. So, um. If it was way back in the brush somewhere that it was able to access, uh, but our larger truck either couldn't nor it would be extremely difficult. These, i- it may depend on the size of the fire, but, um, but at least in concept, uh, that truck could go to that location. It could start driving through the woods, it could get to that fire and you wouldn't have to wait for another backup truck from another city to show up at the same time.
Correct. We'd be able to get water, we'd probably be able to get water on the fire sooner than we could currently right now.
And does it have water on the truck or how's it access water?
Yep, it has, it has a, it has, you know, think of a smaller, it has a smaller pump, like, you know, a lot of times they call it a, a trash pump. It's a smaller one that will pull, but they usually will carry. Uh, you know, a hundred, hundred and fifty gallons on the, that, that's part of the typing, the type six, it has to carry water on it so that it can operate on its own. Not as much as we would, the fire trucks normally carry five hundred, it would be, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five depending on the vehicle.
Caster Johnson.
And then on the question about the, the revenue side, uh, my challenge with that is trying to think about where the crossover point is. If we were to think about, uh, this as a revenue source, um, and it's a hundred thousand dollars, at some point we'd have to take in that hundred thousand to make up the cost of the vehicle, um, plus buying a new one in, I don't know how long it's going to last, but however long, right? And in order to actually have it be generating revenue, it'd have to make that much plus some. Yeah, so.
And just as an example, Fall City, I was, when I was talking to the deputy chief at Fall City, they did something similar a couple of years ago where they bought, they took one of their pickup trucks and they rented a pump and a ten, and a tank from another department and they paid them. After running it for a year or so, they were able to make enough money to where they actually purchased their own equipment and they have their own vehicle now. So, you know, again, you can't count on that, and that's why I'd say I wouldn't necessarily put it in the budget as in we're going to bring in X amount of revenue because it's all dependent on the season, but it's one of those where a lot of departments use it to fund other things as they come up, other things wildland created more equipment or a lot of departments will sit, you know, just like we're doing, you're kind of like building your way up. You start out at an old RV that's built, beat up, and then you work your way up until something nicer, um, by saving some of that money to help offset the purchase.
Caster Johnson, Washington, sorry.
We, we kind of look alike. Thank you for being here tonight, chief. Just a couple of questions on maintenance. So it's my understanding that it doesn't necessarily have to go to the same location for the, excuse, pardon the term, larger rigs where they're maintained. How is it maintained and kind of what would your projection look like for annual maintenance on this?
To be honest, we haven't, we hadn't done that. That would be, like I said, this, seeing as this was a two-year budget and I knew that the council was concerned about it. It was more, like I said, to put away money aside so that we could look at that again and determine, you know, we've, I've seen anywhere and I've talked to my wildland people. You can purchase anything from a thirty thousand up to a sixty or seventy thousand used truck. So that'd be part of what we'd want to look at. It could be maintained by our shop and that was the idea with some of that money being put aside is that it might have to be transferred to, you know, say for example, we bought one that was fifty thousand. Some of that hundred thousand might need to be transferred to the shop to be able to, to, to maintain some of the basic oil change stuff. But it wouldn't have to be part of our fleet that goes down to the Puget Sound Fire Garage where we pay a fee for that. It would be just the normal, you know, a pickup type maintenance. And I wouldn't necessarily, you know, some of the things that we probably talk about, you know, if we look closer to doing this, if it's approved for the budget is I wouldn't necessarily consider that this piece of vehi, this vehicle would be put into the replacement fund. You know, that's why we're talking about, like I said, kind of a proof of concept. You know, it's not like we're going to be putting aside money, um, that needs to go in the replacement fund with the idea that, you know, when this thing wears out in four years, we're going to buy a brand new one. That wasn't the idea. That could be something that we look at down the road, but that was kind of the idea again of, of, you know, getting something that was used. So it wasn't a big outlay just to see how this works. And obviously we'd involve, if we ever do find one, we'd involve our, our mechanics in the city to, to look at it, to help evaluate, is this a good buy, is this not? But that was kind of the idea of the, the hundred is because it was more than what it would cost us for a vehicle. And then we'd be able to use some of that money that'd be left over to help maintain it for those, that, that, you know, those two years or three years, however long we decide to keep it.
So that fifty, sorry, just quick follow-up, that's a hundred thousand would include ongoing maintenance forever, how many ever, you know, three, four, I don't know how many ever years we had it, that's kind of an all-in cost.
That was the idea, okay. That was, yeah, again, like I said, I, we just threw that in there because I was looking at a two-year budget and I didn't want to have to necessarily come back and say, okay, now we need, we found something, we, we need to move on it. The idea was let's put this aside now, whether we use it or not, that'll come, you know, that'll be something, obviously we'll come back to the public safety committee and we can look at it, but it was more just, we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we're thinking about some of the stuff for the future. And, you know, we couldn't come up with exact cost because it really depends on what you look for and what you find. And knowing that we weren't going out there for a brand new vehicle, we just, you know, I got some estimates and things like that to look at. But it really just kind of gives us a, you know, a start in there with our foot in the door.
Thank you chief, appreciate it.
Right, so this would be something then you would take up at public safety? Right? Public safety. My friend Tim Holloway.
Just some of the comments tonight, can we get written for? Uh, so I, all I got right now on record is that. And you said a lot more than that.
Yes. What I, what I put together is going to be given to Jana to put on the list of, you know, I believe that they're putting together a spreadsheet with all kinds of answers to these questions. I wanted to present it and kind of explain it, but yeah, what I wrote up, I was giving to her, some of it I already gave her, but it'll show up on your, eventually when you get those answers to your questions, it'll show up in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
So just a couple more slides for everyone. So the next question, uh, this has been kind of alluded to from basically all the council members, what other revenue increase or expenditure decrease options might be coming to council during the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty AM that are not accounted for within the budget. And so I just kind of wanted to list some of those out. These are not what are currently in the budget. You know, the comprehensive fee study is there. But these things that we're doing internally that require just really a lot of staff time and there's some, certainly some legal service costs associated with, it's one of those, right, for the most part. But otherwise, these are maybe potentially some revenue increases or expenditure decreases that you're going to see. Apparently my internet connection is unstable, which is why you just got that locked up there. But anyway, uh, going through that tribe fee for service, uh, we've had some very good discussions with council regarding that. Fairly recently, franchise agreements, so franchise agreements with companies such as Comcast, for example, that would use our conduit right underground. Uh, those are set for renewal. I think the current agreement with Comcast is, has been fifty years in the making for the most part, so issued in the nineteen seventies. So some of those things are coming for renewal under a different name.
Wow.
Way back then, um, impact fees. Um, so we've had.
That's good.
Some discussion on an impact fee, the transportation impact fee, but there are other impact fees such as a parks impact fee or a fire impact fee as well, um, that could be deployed, capital costs largely associated with development that would take place in the community. Establishing those fees, um, to get those in place before development takes place, um, would be beneficial. Uh, we haven't, you know, budgeted for any, uh, planned revenues from the Snoqualmie mill development or other sort of infill development around the community such that the Northwest Railway Museum Roundhouse project, uh, what some of those increases might look like. We haven't budgeted anything for business licensing or taxes, uh, the BNO tax audit at all, uh, but that is something that we intend to conduct next year. Councilmember Johnson mentioned a square footage tax proposal, or I think maybe the mayor did at the September the fourth meeting itself. So eventually we'd love to come around on that. If you recall earlier this year, uh, council prioritized the TBD sales tax as well as the public safety sales tax. Third on that prioritization list was the BNO tax after that, and so this would be a little bit of a different variation of that, uh, BNO tax proposal. And then similarly down below is kind of one of the expenditure decreases that we'd be looking to hopefully get in place and that's medical cost sharing arrangements. So currently the city pays benefits for certainly our employees, but then also their dependents. Uh, in some cases, employees, spouses have decent medical coverage in which we would love to maybe shift them onto that medical coverage. And potentially the employees would be prepared to share in some of the savings with the city overall. The AWC allows such a program. And so far we've got that in place for MMP, but we'd like to potentially extend that out to the other unions. And it could represent some significant savings overall to the city. So with that said, these are some of the things that we would be having coming down the road in twenty-five, twenty-six that we don't necessarily have money set aside for. It would be working towards internally. And so on. So I just want to make sure that that was shared because in case you have concerns about whether we're balancing our finances well into the future. We've got options and we intend to be proactive on that list that you just saw.
Caster Washington.
Thank you. Sorry, Drew, can you just go back one slide? I just want to make sure I'm on that. Okay. So the tribe fee for service, that's, um, would that be the services that potentially we provide for the lodge? Is that what we're, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And also the admin offices, so where the old hospital was. So provide police and fires there as well.
So two of both locations, okay.
Right.
And so as we know, the lines are. And so as we know, the lines are gonna cross eventually, so, you know, uh, we want to make sure that we're being very proactive during the next biennium to make sure that we can push those out as far as we can. Which is why you're not seeing necessarily any sort of tax increase proposals in front of you today is because really we've got some other things that we want to tackle first before maybe that next sort of proposed tax increase, which ideally would be down the road. Um, so with that said, in terms of next steps, uh, please continue to submit questions and we will address them as quickly as we are able. I can see Jana's computer from here for the most part. She's got the question and answer log up right now, so she's been taking notes. Uh, as we've been trying to answer those questions through here, certainly we'll get Chief Bailey's comments, uh, into that.
But you were.
Excel, uh, workbook.
So.
On September the sixteenth and the seventeenth, uh, we're gonna have department presentations. So next Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday, we're gonna start seeing some of the presentations out of the departments. Uh, please, if you don't mind, bring your budget binders with you for updates to budget documents. So we have some technical housekeeping kind of corrections to make to the budget document overall. We want to make sure that we can get those completed and then we love to retrieve your budget book as you're listening to those department presentations and then update it for you. Uh, when it comes to September the twenty-third, which would be the next council meeting, it's gonna be similarly like today, budget workshop before that meeting. We're gonna continue the review and deliberation, the mayor's proposed budget, which would include continued Q and A sessions. Uh, but then also we would propose to council to submit your proposed changes to the twenty-five, twenty-six mayor's proposed budget or inclusion within the September thirtieth final review and deliberation. So if you're seeking to amend the mayor's proposed budget, we'd like to kind of get those from you. Uh, for the most parts, we can do some financial analysis, ideally return on the thirtieth, uh, discuss what that may look like, what with your proposed changes, what your proposed changes might look like as part of the whole final budget package. And then ideally we would have that kind of all settled on September the thirtieth, uh, to where on October the third, we can meet one last time and adopt the budget. And in addition to that, we would propose two additional public, or two public hearings, one for September the thirtieth and one for October the third as well, as a part of this, for the public to communicate, yeah.
Council Washington.
Yeah, so Director, I'm sorry, do you want the proposed changes by the meeting on the twenty-third or the meeting on the thirtieth?
So the changes by the twenty-third would be beneficial.
So have them by the twenty-third.
Yes, so that we can produce the financial analysis, see what the impact is.
Okay.
And then ideally come back on September the thirtieth, present to you what that financial impact looks like or what the budget may look like with those proposed changes included. Uh, and then ideally if we agree to what that final kind of budget looks like on September the thirtieth, then we would turn around with the budget ordinance on October the third for adoption.
And I would encourage council, um, to attend the council committee, committee meetings next week, whether you're on it or not. Because this is the only time that our directors will be presenting will be to their, to their council committee. So if you don't get a chance to attend it, then please watch it on video later, so.
I just want to comment that, um, September thirtieth and October third, those will be at the fire department because council chambers will be having work done. So it's a little soon, but just know that those two final meetings will be at the fire station.
New AV equipment.
Fun.
Here, Pritham Holloway.
And I need a, I guess, maybe some wordage. I need to distinction. This is the mayor's proposed budget. It will always be the mayor's proposed budget. It is just separate from the final budget.
It is.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not gonna propose changes to the mayor's proposed budget. I'm gonna use as a starting point, propose changes against it as the final budget. Okay. This is a starting point. I got no argument to starting point. But once I start, it's a separate entity. And I, I just wanted, let's make that distinction clear.
Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise we do need to adjourn and get ready for our council meeting.
Good job.
Thank you, Drew, and thank you, Jana, for your continued work on our budget. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any posnay? We're unanimous and we are adjourned and we will start again at seven PM for the council meeting. Show that all council members are present, um, except for we have excuse, Councilmember Christiansen. So council, please stand and join me in seeing the pledge of allegiance and Mayor Pritham Halli, would you please lead the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into the this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The move by Council Johnson, second by Council Watten. Is there any discussion, council? Seeing none. All in favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any posnay? And the agenda is announced, approved. Thank you. So moving on, next item is AB twenty-four dash zero nine three, the appointment of, to the planning commission. So the purpose of this agenda bill is to confirm the mayor's recommendation to appoint Daniel Murphy to the planning commission. Daniel is a resident of Sukkomi and has extensive experience developing, implementing, and overseeing transportation, urban planning and economic development programs in both the private and public sectors. Currently he leads public policy and government affairs for a private transportation and urban planning technology firm. He has a desire to serve his community and will be a great addition to the commission. And we do have him here this evening in the audience. Council may have a motion to confirm the appointment of Daniel Murphy to planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Council Washington and second by Council Johnson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any posnay? And it's unanimous to approve Daniel Murphy to the planning commission. And I do see he is here, you can either wave or if you want to say a few words, it's up to you.
I just want to thank the mayor and the council, uh, excited to serve the community and be ready to kind of dive in on Monday. So thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on, at this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Um, no online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person, mail or email to cityclerk@sukkomiwa.gov. And before we, um, read through the ground rules, is there anyone in city council chambers that does want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda this evening? So raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so public comment is closed. And we are moving on to the consent agenda, Council Johnson.
Oftentimes we, uh, make mention that if members of the public, uh, wanted to let themselves go after some sort of an announcement or a confirmation that they're welcome to do so, and they don't sit through a long meeting.
That is true, and I did tell him on the phone, so. Up to him. Thank you. The consent agenda contains to approve the city council meeting minutes dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Claims report dated September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Exactly.
Moved by Council Watten and second by Mayor Pritham Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Seeing none. Councilors, there any just discussion? Okay. We'll move to a vote. All that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Posnay? Okay, nope. Which passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. Um, first community report is public safety committee, fire department, second quarter twenty twenty-four accreditation report. This item is information only and is provided in your packet for review. Um, but if you do have any questions, we do have our chief, fire chief here. Questions? Okay. Seeing none. Is there any further public safety committee report?
There is not. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there a report for community development committee?
Uh, nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
That's what I recall now. Am I forgetting anything?
Is there a report for Finance Administration Committee?
I do not believe we have a report.
Right. So.
Any of us working?
Budgets usually.
That's true. And having numerous meetings on, but so that brings me to our, to the mayor's report. Um, so first of all, Chief Lynch and I met with Superintendent Dan White of Echo Glen on August twenty-eighth. And they've implemented, um, many new security protocols. And they are nearly fully staffed, and they will actually start the fence, this, um, exterior fence um, in December. So they're able to get all the permits, which we thought would take, be time, take some time to do, and they were able to, to, um, get the permits. So, um, we are seeing some positive changes that echo then. Be sure, we have a new page on our website. So be sure to check it out. It's our new tourism page. And if you look at the website and it shows visit Sukkomi, if you click on that, you can access the business directory, trails, trail maps, museums, community events, and a lot more. So thanks and nice job to Dana McCall and Nicole Weeby for creating this important tourism page. It's a great page. Um, good news, CA Carey. One of you is very familiar with this, Mayor Pritham Holloway. So CA Carey, the Supreme, Supreme Court denied review of CA Carey case. The order awarded the city fees responding to the petition for review. And so we should see fees for this and for previous lawsuits in the near future. So that is done after many years. So that was good news.
Justice prevents.
It occasionally wins, yeah.
Next, we need to create legislative priorities. I believe that's going to be on the F and A commit, council committee agenda. And this year, the, this is during legislative session, it is when they are going to be setting their budget. So the state budget. And so, um, creating legislative priorities and then also making sure that we can reach out to our legislatures to first to make sure that the governor's budget includes the state's youth recreation facilities grant because we, if it is approved, then we are awarded the one point two million dollars, um, way we're able to get that grant. And second of all, um, to secure funding for the community center expansion, um, have our, our different legislatures advocate for us. So we need to, um, legislative priorities and then reaching out to our legislatures. So with that, next item is council or commission and committee liaison reports. So do we have any, Council Cotton?
Yes, I have a couple. I'll keep it brief. Um, the SCA Public Health Meeting this month, probably the, the biggest thing was regarding the, uh, the new vaccine for COVID nineteen, which has been, um, updated for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, and in June, the CDC approved the new vaccine. And it's now for all ages greater than six months. With the mutations, they're considering previous vaccines, uh, not keeping you current. So if you are on the fence about getting a booster, this is the time to do it and, uh, get the new vaccine. Pfizer and Moderna have the, the vaccine out, uh, and approved for all ages. It's the KP point two strain is the one that's, um, causing problems, uh, and this go around. Novavax has just received approval, so they still have to roll it out. So, um, the bad news for, um, the state is that the federal vaccine funds have ended. And so King County will not have additional funding. The state's only given them, um, one million dollars is up being offered at this time for vaccine clinics, which is really not very much considering that, um, these vaccines, um, for the uninsured costs about a hundred and thirty dollars a dose. Um, so that's, uh, and we have about a hundred thousand uninsured, uh, folks here in King County that, um, so still partnering with pharmacies, hospitals, and other agencies, um, to try and get this vulnerable population covered. Other things, bird flu H five N one still around. Um, this is the one that's crossed into dairy cows and the, the dairy workers. It is, uh, here in King County in the wild bird population. So they're testing positive. So if you find any, um, sick or dead, uh, birds, please stay away or take precautions as far as PP, if you're gonna move them and get your annual flu shot because there is some, um, cross protection with that. That was kind of, um, oh, um, our Attorney General Ferguson has, uh, started in July, the Hundred Days of Action Against Gun Violence. So, um, they're considering this a serious public health crisis. So that is, it's gonna be, you'll see ongoing programs and money's being out there for that. Uh, other things, um, at this month's, um, uh, Historic Downtown Merchants Association, um, it was announced that the Northwest Railway Museum is stepping down as, um, Sukkomi Days Festival coordinators uh, after fifteen years. So they will be, um, focusing on the new exhibit hall and roundhouse and, um, take, which takes up staff time and their coordinator was actually promoted to curator. So, um, the Historic Downtown Merchants Association is gonna be stepping up and taking over on this. Um, the Railway Museum will still support with, um, the parade and website, uh, and of course museum exhibits for that, but, uh, uh, and it seems that they are going to, the Merchants Association is wanting to change the date. Uh, instead of it always being the third, um, Saturday in August, they're maybe looking at pushing it out to September. Um, so they haven't finalized that yet. So that will be, we're coming. And lastly, the Art Commission has picked the design for, um, the new pole banners, from a local artist. So, and they're really cool, but spoiler alert, I'm not gonna show them to you. That's, that's all I have.
That's great. Thank you for the updates. Council Washington.
Yep, just a quick reminder that, uh, Sukkomi Watershed Forum is having its last in-person meeting, um, at the Salish Lodge here on the eighteenth of September. So hopefully we can see y'all there. It's always a great time.
Great, thank you. Council Watten.
Uh, thank you. Um, couple of things. One is from the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, which I'm one of eight representatives from the thirty-eight cities serving on. We have good news from the King County Council on the twenty-seventh of August. They unanimously passed a motion declaring their intent to keep the county's juvenile detention center open, which is awesome news. Uh, they are not sure how the county executive is going to respond as he's been advocating for years to close that and the King County Jail, which, um, we have yet to hear from the council on that decision as well. And then the next one, uh, comes from the Sukkomi Valley Task Force on Affordable Housing. City of North Bend put out an RFP, Request for Proposal, got interest from fourteen different organizations and builders, which what I found just amazing and very encouraging. Three actually applied. It's under consideration with the committee of five, uh, that includes two people from the business community, uh, two people from their council and one other, uh, staff member on that, uh, selection committee. And what was most interesting is that they originally thought that it could, the, the property in downtown North Bend could only support about sixteen, fifteen, sixteen units. And the proposals were up to thirty units, all within a thirty-five foot height limit and onsite parking too. So, uh, you know, as we look um, for inspiration from them, I think it's, it's good keeping that in mind. And congratulations, City of North Bend.
Thank you. Council Johnson.
I wanted to mention that, uh, the, uh, very quick, that the, uh, train station roof, uh, is nearing completion. It is quite a process for older buildings to try to find contractors who can actually do the kind of work that needs to be done to make it look right and historic. Lots of folks can put a roof on, but not like the one that they've got. And the materials also, they're not common.
Awesome.
Yeah. So it's almost.
That's great. Any other updates? All right, thank you for the updates. And how about from our city administrator on some of the department reports?
So department reports a little late this month, I don't know what happened to C D and public works, but if you have any questions, what they've been up to, give them a call. Fire department had a hundred and seventy five calls in August. And eighty six of them were EMS. And then the other thing to note would be that the police department crime stats are continuing a decline from the previous year. So that is good news.
Excellent. That is great news.
I've noticed, I'm not sure if there's any particular explanation for it, and I hope that it's for good reasons. Mental health professional contacts is down for a year to date quite substantially. So I don't know if chief wants to comment on that at all as to any particular reasons. I'm hoping that's just that the program's working.
No, I think we'd be happy to report back later.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you. Any other questions? Gosh, we're at the end of the agenda, we do have some executive sessions, so.
It'll be a record.
I, it is.
Executive sessions, don't count your tickets.
Twelve o'clock meeting.
So executive session, pursuit to R C W forty two dot three zero dot one ten one I, potential litigation or litigation or leak risks of a proposed action or current practice lasting approximately, how many minutes do we think we need?
Five, six.
I like that.
Fifteen.
Yes.
We'll start with fifteen minutes. Those attending will be city attorney David Lenahan, city administrator Mike Chambliss, Chief Lynch, Chief Bailey, community development director, our Tetcha and finance director Bootay. And no, see no action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. So council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. And the city clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So we take a five minute break and see their executive session would be completed by seven forty five. Alright, so it is now seven nineteen and we will convene in five minutes for executive session.